Brandon, wait a minute. Welcome to an opening ceremony. Let's do an opening ceremony. I will lead in the pledge of allegiance. And Kevin, if you wouldn't mind offering the invocation, which all please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, yeah.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for our wonderful city that we have the pleasure of living in. We're grateful that we have the opportunity to discuss the laws and code in our city and how we can improve them. How we pray that they'll guide us and help us that we can create a wonderful atmosphere for our city in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right, now, Brandon, roll call.
Commissioner Ryan Garrett.
Here.
Commissioner Sam Brady is asked to be excused. Commissioner Kerry Carroll is excused. Commissioner Kevin Paulson.
Here.
Chairman Curtis Tanner.
Here.
And Councilmember Anderson is in provo. So she's excused.
All right. There are no minutes, from what I understand. Is that correct?
That's correct. We are in the process of getting a new recording minute taker person. So if you know of anybody that may be interested, we're looking. And it doesn't require that they be here. They can actually just
Listen to the CD.
Listen to the minutes. Or listen to the video or audio and do them from home.
Does it have to be like a train stenographer?
No.
Okay.
It's not.
It's a dying art. It's a dying art.
Yes, it is.
That too.
Well, yeah, it's mostly just, yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
All right, subdivision review.
No subdivision.
I think it's not subdivision. It's probably
Code?
Ordinance, code review.
Oh, yes.
Review and discuss amendments to Chapter 8A regulating the keeping of farm animals in the RS-12 zone. Request to allow small farm animals in R-112, R-110 zones. You've received, I'm assuming, from citizens to house small farm animals?
So I have. You remember, a little while ago, I brought a request from Mayor Pullman. He had received some requests from citizens. Since that time, I continue to receive requests from residents to allow, it's mostly chickens, to allow chickens in
And rabbits.
And rabbits, but most of the request is chickens.
Rabbits don't lay very good eggs.
And is it, are they seeking that it expand to other zones that it be permitted?
Yeah, so right now, we only allow it in the RS-12 zone, 12,000 square feet. I did some research on the matter. And all of the ordinances that we are talking about, I've provided you some ordinances from neighboring cities. Down at the bottom, I've highlighted or written what cities ordinances those are. But most of the ordinances allow rabbits and chickens in zones that are smaller than our zone. I think the smallest was 6,500 square feet, and I believe that was in West Point. You just kind of have to, sorry, you just kind of have to fish through it. I should have
What do you mean, the averages?
I think the averages, a lot of them, a lot of them.
So is it 1724-2 animal allowance? Is that what we're supposed to be looking at?
So the West Point one is 1771-00.
Oh, whoops.
Page two of three, I think.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
There's, okay, I understand what the format is here.
I'm just
Pull up the map.
And, you know, West Point, they rank their, their animals get points. So based on the size of the animal, if you look at page one of three farm animal regulations, you know, you have to, a pig is 50 points and so on and so forth. I I don't know that I'm really into the mathematical equations. I would rather just say in a zone of 10,000 square feet, you can have five chickens.
How many requests do you have? We, we
I, well.
We discussed this with the planning commission two months ago.
Yeah, and it was a unanimous no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The commission said, no, leave it be. So since then, how many requests?
I bet I've had half a dozen requests. And, and I think it's based on economy, right? People are starting to get a little bit nervous about inflation and and so you've got those people that are thinking that they can save hundreds of dollars by raising four or five chickens.
And still $2.
So, all right. So are we talking, what would you guys think is the minimal acceptable lot size for that sort of thing?
I've got two general comments for you to consider. And I'll just kind of remind you about some discussions we had. Every time, I can't remember the last time we zoned something RS-12. The only difference between RS-12 and R-112 is RS-12 allows animal keeping. And if you recall, almost every developer that comes in here says, you have a choice. You want RS-12, you want R-112. I want R-112 because it is not allowed animal keeping.
Yeah.
Because generally, people don't want that. They're, they don't want to do it. They don't want their neighbors doing it. So I remind you of that fact, that the primary, primarily, everything you zone R-112 is for that specific reason, no animal keeping.
I think I'm, I think I live in RS-12.
Yeah. Yeah, you do. You're down in
Creekview.
Creekview.
We changed none of that. That's still all allowed.
Okay.
The other fact, the other factor I need to take into consideration is that we've done a fair amount of R-110 zones. Not as much as R-112, but there's been a fair amount of it. And so I think the consideration that you might want to make is whether you would want to go down to the R-110 and allow it.
But if you're going to do that, you might as well allow it in the R-112, which people have specifically said, we don't want nothing to do with it.
And in any of these statutes, do they have like setback rules? I don't know if that would be the right terminology for having like a coop or anything set off from the boundary.
Only setback rule that I've found has to do with apiaries, beehives.
Right.
But no, there are no setback requirements as I've gone through here on, on chicken coops or rabbit pens. You know, the ordinances across the county vary from city to city. It's Clearfield City that allows 6,500 square feet. No smaller than 6,500 square feet for the keeping of chickens.
What size, Cherry Heights, what size are those lots?
Cherry Heights is an R-3, and those are
Is that the ones right across?
Yeah.
Those are the postage stamp?
They're, they're like 6,500.
Because like, I think that would be a little too
Small.
Small and cooped up. Pardon the puns.
I, I, I don't know that I'm comfortable in going down to the R-18. I think I could be okay with the R-110s. Most of the calls, when I take the calls, I'll ask where they live. And they're in the R-112.
Right, are they?
Yeah.
What, have you gotten the opposite reaction? People complaining about chicken coops or?
I do. I have those.
Is that frequent, like, what, what's the feel there?
We have, I've responded to three complaints and three homes have removed the chickens from their yard. So, and that's been over the course of a couple of years.
And were those R-112, R-110?
They were R-112.
Okay.
So I don't know. I, I struggle with this because I, I'm not a, I'm not a I'm of the opinion that if you want to raise farm animals, go somewhere where you can raise farm animals.
There's a house for sale in my neighborhood. There's, there's a spot for them.
There's, there's no, there's no question that if you keep chickens, you're also breeding rats and raccoons.
Yeah.
And skunks. It, it, it's really not debatable.
Right.
You will have those other pests in your neighborhood if you have chickens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My, my
And that's the primary complaint against them.
Yeah, yeah, are the resultant ulterior wildlife.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, and that's, I think, if I can talk for Kerry Carroll, that's one of her biggest gripes about it is all the the pests that, that come and enjoy the
Yeah.
tailings that are from the chickens, chicken feed and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, our neighbor had chickens and now got swiped by either foxes or raccoons or
Yeah.
snakes or something.
My one neighbor is telling my other neighbor that the coyotes are keeping a really close eye on the chicken coop. So there's, there's bigger ones as well.
I don't think we need to change anything. Kaseville, Kaseville doesn't have
They all let them have them. It's just, you know, various cities let them have them down to a certain size. So if you're a certain size, then you can have a certain number.
Well, if, if
If they were sad as well.
If developers are saying they don't want, is it RS-12 that lets them in?
It's R, it's R-112 that does.
But RS-12 does?
Yes.
But if, if developers come with, with, and they know that, they know who they're building for. If they're coming to the city saying, I've got a choice between, you know, chickens or no chickens. I don't want chickens, then that's kind of a good indicator of, of who's buying and what, what they want to buy, right?
It feels like a compelling reason.
Yeah.
It makes it greater for the city to opt not to have farm animals in their neighborhood. I think that's safe to say.
So
I'm in agreement with that.
I, again, I'm fine with that. What I would like is, could you, Chairman Tanner, prepare a statement that just says the planning commission feels there's no need to change the ordinance? So that I can then go to the city council and say, this is the decision under the planning commission regarding chickens and rabbits. Not to throw anybody under the bus, but I just want them to know that this was debated, that this was the decision. It wasn't just a staff decision to say no.
Right.
If there was an overwhelming loss of 50 residents that thought there was a need for farm animals, then
Well, and what's interesting, I also, when people want to debate this, I also say, well, you're welcome to come to the planning commission and talk to them about changing your ordinance.
I would be open to some sort of, if there was a groundswell, kind of like that, if people presented like some thoughts, I'd be open to it because I'll be honest, I do live in RS-12. I am considering, you know, getting chickens. I'm watching to see if my neighbor's chickens get swiped by the wildlife. See if they survive. If they survive, I might do it myself. But again, I'm within the zone that permits it. But I, you know, I get people's desire for that. But I also know that there's a lot of people, like when another neighbor had a goat, which he was permitted to do, there were people who were bothered by it. I liked it. It stunk, but it was, you know, it's kind of fun for my kids to see the goat.
I think if you've got the room and you can be a good tender of them, rather than, rather than just kind of sloppily put something together. I think, I think it's, it's a good thing to keep it where you've got enough room to make it go.
Yeah.
But don't chicken, you could have roosters or
And I actually
I think, actually, they talked about
Yeah, you can have
We don't allow roosters. Is that the case?
No, we don't allow roosters. You can only have
Hens.
Hens, but, you know, they do say, not in our ordinance, some of these ordinance say that you can have a rooster long enough to raise it, and then you have to get rid of it. So there's a grace period of, I think, six months
Right.
to get that rooster raised before
Yeah, sometimes you might get a chick from Cal Ranch and you just don't quite know what it's going to be.
So
Okay.
Okay.
We'll prepare a statement. And I'll I guess I can send it out and kind of get, I'll send out a draft and get your comment.
Okay.
I think it'll be something like, we don't want no darn chicken around here. Would that be good enough?
That'd be good. Don't people, the general can raise four of them.
That's right. For a small fee, for a small fee, I will lease out a small corner of my lot.
Chicken barn.
I'm joking. I, I like chickens. I get fresh chicken eggs from my son and my, my grandkids. But we're in a piece of ground that's big enough to handle them.
Yeah, yeah.
And they, they tend them well, so.
Well, that's the thing. If you take care of them, then they're typically not a problem. But if, you know, if you're like most kids, they say, Mom, Dad, I want a chicken, or Mom, Dad, I want a dog. And the next, you know, three months, they love it. After that, you're walking the dog and you're cleaning up after the dogs.
Oh, that was what I was going to ask. Has the request for chickens increased in relation to the cost of eggs?
Yes.
So, so when, when things are good and we're not seeing big inflation, then there's really not a high, you know, persistent request for chickens?
No, there's not.
I would imagine you could probably find somewhere on the internet a cost per egg, if you're raising your own chickens.
I would think so. There's the same cost for chicken feed's gone up three times what it used to be.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, to get, to get the coop, to get the feed, to get the scratch, you know, all those kind of things, you know, that's a pretty big investment right off the bat. And what's the payoff over time?
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Whoops, let's see. Next one. Review, discuss amendment to Title 10, Chapter 11, Section 13, swimming pools and tennis courts. Help us with this one, Brandon.
Are we talking about pickleball right now?
What's that?
Are we talking about the pickleball craze?
Well, no, we're actually talking about the pools, but I want to talk about, you know, because we have ordinance that talks about tennis courts, but we don't have anything that addresses pickleball courts or basketball courts.
Right.
And Jeff may have something to say about this. I, my personal opinion is why do we regulate tennis courts and we don't regulate pickleball courts and basketball courts? So maybe it makes sense to take tennis courts out of the ordinance or to put courts,
Like a support court?
Tennis, sports courts, whatever kind of court in the ordinance and regulate it that way. But the issue I'm having right now is in our ordinance under Section 13, we have swimming pools. Matter of fact, yeah. Here, let me get the Sorry, I didn't figure that out. Can you pull it up? I'm going to code. Yeah. Thank you. So we have two sections in the, in the ordinance. And I wasn't made aware of this until just recently when some people down in the back nine subdivision wanted to build a pool. And, and I told them, you know, the setbacks are this and this. Well, the, the neighbor also asked that I send him the ordinance. So I sent him the ordinance and he said, well, you've got another ordinance that says it has to be 30 feet in width. So is it 20 feet or 30 feet?
Hmm.
Well, in one section of our code, it does say 30 feet. In the other section of the code, it says 20 feet. I've always wanted 20 feet. I've never, I've never, 30 feet's pretty hard to get, especially with a swimming pool.
Yeah.
But, so there's the, the ordinance. That's the one I'm proposing to get rid of altogether, cross out. And then just go and use the, the private swimming pools ordinance. But I'm open to some discussion and, and about this because as I've done some research, other cities or most cities require that it be five feet from the property line. Ours requires it four feet from the property line. I don't know if the foot makes that much of a difference, but if we're going to, if we're going to amend it, amend our ordinance, do we need to make other changes to our ordinance? I'm fine with the 20 feet. 30 feet, I think, is too too difficult to try and meet. And that's 30 feet from the edge of the pool to the neighbor's house.
Okay, I think, on the four feet, five feet, I think probably the greater would be a little bit more safe. If two people are trying to pass or someone with a child or something, you want to give them plenty of room, you know, for circulation around the pool so someone doesn't go in inadvertently.
Yeah, and I know that the five feet comes out of the building code requirements. The idea behind that was is that a kid climbs over a fence and falls in a swimming pool and drowns accidentally. So that there needs to be this space
Between the fence and the pool.
Between the fence and the pool. I think probably the five feet is just a little bit better.
So breaking his arm falling from a fence is better than drowning?
Yes. Which, you know, that, that maybe needs to be, because they obviously get the question too, how far away from my house does the pool need to be? And I've always just as a guiding recommendation said, six feet, you know, put at least six feet edge of the pool to the
I would think that's very, very close, but
I would too, but I don't know.
Yeah, we ought to look at that and see.
I don't know. The ordinances, other city ordinances don't really address the distance from the home, from the home where the pool's located.
Yeah, the pool owner's home.
Yeah. So, but with, with homes getting bigger and lots getting smaller and people's desire to cram as much as they can on, on a piece of property, it's getting tougher and tougher to accommodate all these
Yeah.
all these things. I'm not saying we need to accommodate. I just
That's where homeowner association pools come in.
Yeah. Yeah. So pool one's another one that I'd like to, I'd like to look at
Give some time into, okay.
and review. My recommendations, again, would be to eliminate that upper section. If we want to, if we want to regulate tennis courts and pickleball courts and basketball courts, then we probably need to come up with some language that regulates that, but I
Is, is there a need to regulate those? I mean, we talk about noise at night. We do, we talk about lighting at night? I mean, or do we talk about lighting that's, you know, that's shielded from neighbors? So if they're playing tennis, you know, in the nighttime, you don't want that shining on people, you know, neighbor's home?
Yeah.
Do we have anything that covers that? Because we talked about the noise aspect and being
Yeah.
kind of quiet hours after 10:00 or something like that.
We have, I haven't really run across any, any lighting and I haven't really looked into it, but I guess maybe we should because pickleball is something that people love to play at night.
Yeah.
It's cool, and I'm sure tennis is the same way.
Yeah.
The footprint of the two courts are significantly different, right?
Well, it's, it's like a two to one kind of a thing, I think.
But the lighting would still be the same. It still, maybe it has to be a dark sky or
Shielded, light, at least so it's, it's not polluting across, across the, across the Not necessarily.
My neighbor's just at a pickleball court. No, my backyard neighbor was
In front of it, yeah.
But, but their kitty corner, so I, but I, we come and see it, I think.
Well, they need to do their lights correctly because you can, you can, there's technology that can, you know, direct lights right where it needs to be and make the rest a lot less lit.
I would imagine there's probably some time things that we could put in place too, kind of a
Yeah.
Time where it's a view.
Yeah, or, or, you know, like a certain cutoff time, like in our ordinance saying, you know, the, whatever lights have to be out later.
Similar to, similar to the noise.
Right, something like that. I mean, I guess it would be hard for somebody to determine what lights, what level of light needs to be off versus not.
Yeah.
You've got streetlights, right? You've got
You've got yard lights, you have a lot of yard lights on.
Right.
Are there any lighting facilities, park facilities, courts in the city?
No.
Hey. I guess what we need to do is just kind of consider and compare what the pool and possibly recreation courts kind of thing might be.
Lighting, we're ready to propose taking that one section out. I think it's covered under private pools.
Yeah.
The other comment that I would make is to Section F. Bradley and I talked about this a little bit. That we require a six-foot fence around the pool, which makes a whole lot of sense. That's also a building code thing.
Right.
Building code has now changed to say that if you have an appropriate locking pool cover, you do not need a fence.
And I, yeah.
Apparently, technology and locking covers has come a long ways.
Yeah.
Because they no longer, building code require fence. We probably ought to echo that.
Okay.
We don't have to. We, we can be more restrictive if we want to, but you might have people fighting about that.
Yeah. That's true. Are you better than the National Building Code, you know?
That, that's the argument you could get, kind of a thing.
So I, wouldn't it make sense to remove that paragraph that says, recommended to not, to not regulate tennis courts and remove the inconsistency? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Can we take some time to review this?
Yes. That's why I bring it to you, so we can review it, make some notes. All of these ordinances are going to require public hearing if we end up updating. So I would like to schedule one public hearing for all of them.
For all of it, okay.
Or for the ones that we're recommending we change.
Is tennis courts discussed anywhere else?
No.
Would it be affected just by regular setback requirements? Would that be the only thing governing that sort of thing?
The pools?
No, like courts, sport courts?
Oh, yeah. Well, like, for example, an RV path, they can pour an RV path right up to the property line.
Right.
And people put basketball
Hoop fans.
shoes in their RV path, so.
Wow, that's a good point.
And pickleball courts, I haven't regulated. It hasn't been a problem. But I know of some people that have got pickleball courts in their backyard and they're pretty close to their
lines.
property.
I'm a pro, I have the test.
But I haven't any problem with tennis, believe you.
No.
The only, the only tennis court issue that I have had is your neighbor across the street and their, their back door neighbor who says they don't appreciate them playing tennis at night when they can look in their home. And I said, well, unfortunately, they can play tennis at night, you just have to close your blinds. Her excuse was, I like to look at the mountains. And I said, well, they like to play tennis. So
Yeah, I can't imagine that there'd be a lot of complaint on that. Have you gotten a lot of, other than that, have you gotten any big pushback on pickleball courts or sport courts or anything?
I haven't had any, really any complaints on any of those.
Okay.
And I haven't had any complaints on pools. It's just, we've got to determine if a lot of 30 feet or something.
Just, just, just remove the inconsistency.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can clarify. I think it'd be nice to, to address the lighting too.
But not specifically with the sport courts or pickleball.
Just, 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 yeah. Okay.
I wonder if
And maybe we just have ordinance that's called yard lighting or something along those
Right. I wondered, are you aware of surrounding cities that have any sort of similar lighting-based ordinance?
Farming, I believe, that's at a ordinance suppressing
Just something we could try to piggyback off of then?
Yeah.
You know, Curtis, you could give some input from your perspective of what you've seen in the industry, so.
There are, yeah, there are, there are lighting standards, lighting restrictions, whatever
Right.
to, to shield and, you know, minimize light pollution.
Here's farming, it's right here. This is, no lighting may be installed in connection with multi-purpose courts, which throw any direct rays beyond the property lines on which it is constructed.
Yeah.
And we could, we could just eliminate the court reference and just say, is, you know.
That's, that's, that kind of sells it out, so.
Like that.
And I'm sure if we went through some time to those holidays, you know, all's I did is jumped on each city's website and just searched chickens and pools and.
Right, yeah.
What if you want a spotlight that shines straight up like the sun, sort of, you know?
Are you talking about the, the World Trade Centers?
Are you allowed to do that?
Or so you can let me know that you.
As long as it doesn't.
House at your house.
As long as it doesn't bother your date or.
Or a huge, or a huge snowbank.
There are, there are all ordinances that talk about, you know, dark sky and all that kind of stuff, or dark sky, whatever it is, so. But if, I think it could be like limited to certain holidays, like your birthday or something. I'm kidding there, but.
Your birthday, you have a whole windscreen hardware. Are you pretending to be Batman? Okay. Okay.
All right.
So that one will be coming back to you.
Okay, back to the signs. We talked about this, what, six months ago?
We did, we talked about this a little while ago. This is becoming a bigger problem. And it really, it's really about portable real estate signs.
What's an example?
Ryan Ivey.
Ah, yes, yes, I know exactly what you're talking about.
The sign of his, a truck.
Yeah.
Right.
Parked everywhere, parked everywhere. But I, so there are some ordinances, Clearfield has a pretty, I mean, they're pretty basic, but if you go to Clearfield's ordinance.
Prohibited sign, prohibited sign devices.
This says, Clearfield says, is prohibited, any truck trailer or other vehicle conspicuously or regularly parked on or off premises with an advertising message or logo displayed to attract attention to a business, product, or promotion. Yeah. That's, that's kind of the one that I.
Okay.
Most liked, because it was pretty obvious.
Look at number nine there, it'll, we'll go backwards. Spotlights directed into the night sky.
Is there a good plan? Red, except for Halloween.
Unless, unless they're promoting it.
Yeah.
So this, this would be broad to cover yard sale signs, posters? This would cover people parking their cars on the side of the road for sale, you know?
Yeah.
That's been a problem too.
We have in our ordinance, the, you know, parking of cars for sale, that's, that's in our ordinance.
You have to exclude the guy that's got his plumbing truck parked in the driveway every night, because he, that's what. He'd be his work of life.
Yeah.
That's his work. So that, those kind of things would have to be legal.
Yeah, and I don't know, you know, because I thought about that. You know, you read that, it says any truck trailer or other vehicle.
Yeah, that's a little overbroad.
So, you know.
It, it talks about regularly parked on or off premises.
Well, and then, then going back to Ryan Ivey, he does park on his premises, right? Isn't that his land?
Yes.
So that, that's what's tricky here.
He's doing that for an advertising purpose.
It, it's true, but then you have to, you have to litigate intent, which is the hardest thing, right?
Yes.
Because, you know, there's like in the back nine when I go running, there's someone who parked their work vehicle and arguably that's advertising his work, but certainly that's not his intent. And there's a very much different intent when you're parking at a certain angle on Main Street to, you know, show your broadside.
Yeah. Now, he was, in that he reads that location, as I understand it, right? That's not his house.
I think Sam would know, Sam knows the details on that.
That's true. He lives across the. And he's a good guy, don't get me wrong. It's just that, that one issue has created more frustration amongst the people down in that area than anything.
Really?
This has been, this, this has been brought up all over the DASGAM.
Oh, interesting.
This is not, this is not a true heights issue alone. People have complained about this county-wide, it's not just, it's, it's, it's real estate agents. And it's about him mainly, every time I heard about it.
He's probably the most well-advertised agent in the area, there's no question about that. I, I think we, we'd have to be real, like, we'd have to walk the line pretty well on the language just because it is, it, it leaves a lot of room, a lot of room for interpretation and ambiguity. I, I think that's a be kind of a hard line to, to walk, just to make sure that we're careful.
Okay, yeah. It puts, the, the last sentence of that paragraph six, the planning and zoning administrator or designate may require the removal of such vehicle if in, is or there opinion such vehicle is being utilized for advertising purposes.
No, that's, that's good, that's true, that's nice.
Yeah, that might be the out.
There's an arbiter that can decide, and that would be us, right?
Yeah.
Well, the zoning administrator would be Brandon.
Would be Brandon.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Have fun with that.
Is that an advertising ordinance?
This is Clearfield's, I don't know if it's for that, sir. So, what about the flags, those shepherd crook kind of banners that are, you know, put up once in a while or, you know?
Those are advertising.
Yeah, they wave until they're kind of sunblazed and.
Yeah, and they shreds.
I guess that's a, that's an element to be considered.
Yeah. The other one that, that this could be considered or used on, I think we already had it in our ordinance, is you drive north on Main Street and pass the Orchard Farms condos. For 13 years, their sign has been out in the park, if you know what.
Oh, that's huge, that is huge.
It's huge. That would, that would, that would fall within this too.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to think, what else would fall within this? I mean, like, just like someone selling their home, technically, the, the real estate sign they put on their lawn, right?
There's a, there's a, there's a provision in the sign ordinance that allows for campaign signs and real estate signs for the selling, for the purpose of selling a home on which the property, the sign exists, or. Okay. But it does, you know, there's the, the guitar lesson signs that we go around and remove and the voice lesson and swim lesson and.
Or the.
Christmas lights and.
Buy houses with my money or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the one I can't figure out. If you can guarantee $60,000 a month, why are you riding in Sharpie on pillows?
Just, just a question I've always had.
All right, so some thought needs to be put to that as well. Thank you for providing these comparables.
Yeah, our ordinance is going to be found on, on our C website. I'll send you a link with those, with those ordinances so that we can start working on that. I think the one that's probably the most pressing right now is the swimming pool ordinance.
Just, just to make it consistent and.
Just to make it consistent. I've got two people on hold with their pools because of the inconsistency.
Okay.
What are they waiting for? Are they just waiting? What would they like? Well, what they like is the 20 feet, which is what I've always enforced. I mean, the Tanner compound over there, they all have pools that meet the city's waters.
Hey, we have a trampoline, okay?
Are they, are they going to be the only ones that's couple of lots?
Yeah. Yeah, they would, they're, they're going to be pushed off until the weather will, will allow it.
But still, they have to get their plants out or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any reason we can't set it back from the ordinance?
Well, because it's a change to the, it's a change to the.
It needs to be a public hearing.
It's interesting to do this point, because it seems like we could, off the record on, like, you know, communicate some birthday news about that one to set it hearing, so that we can move it quicker throughout, or something.
Yeah.
I guess we're not changing our, aren't we just organizing our?
Well, we're changing, we're removing, we're changing the. Yeah, if you take any language out, that's a change.
Well, we're, we're correcting our, because it says 30, we're complying, we're going to the more.
Legit.
Yeah, the loose definition, so can we just, for now, we'll just make it 30. Or maybe 20, but.
Are you, are you, are you not thinking you want to change anything other than that? I mean, we want to look at the four versus five, we want to look at four feet versus five feet. Well, we have a.
We have a jurisdiction regardless, so we can change the others, but could we at least give feedback to those residents in 20s, this file? Is that, would that be okay?
Yeah.
I guess you can hear something to agree with us at all, though.
That would be, I think that'd be okay.
We have the votes, at least.
I don't want to get away from the city there.
Okay. I guess, I guess I can tell them, well, no, I don't even want to. Let me just block this scene, I mean, just say, we'll have to have a public hearing, we have to do it anyway.
Yeah.
And I think at the public hearing, you're going to get one of the neighbors showing up saying 20 feet's too close, it needs to be 30.
So that's from the edge of the pool to the neighbor's closest part of the neighbor's home?
Is it their home or their lot?
Their home.
Their home, right?
The home.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, you, you make 30 feet and that's.
Well, the, the sentence would at least have on the side of the words, right? So would that be 20 or 30?
No, because this happens to be a corner lot where it's the pool owner's rear yard and the neighbor's side yard. So the neighbor has 10 feet and the property owner where the pool is going has four feet to the edge of the pool, so he's got 14 feet. He needs, by ordinance, 20 feet.
Really?
I mean, the only concern would be if there's some sort of sloping issue, right?
Does he have room to move it?
He has room to move it, he'll push it closer to the house, but that's where the other question came is, well, how close to the house can I push it? And I said, well, you gotta, you gotta be at least six feet away from your house. And the only reason I said that is because if the deep bed is near the footings and that pool starts to leak for whatever reason, you don't want there to be some, some settling issues or some water issues associated with the basement and the pool. So if you go two to one, assuming the depth of the, of the home, the depth of the pool, it's about a 45-degree angle, but under the code, you can, you can have something, something that close to the home if it's kind of two to one slope.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's just a mess, I mean, it's just snowballs. But in this, in this scenario, if the individual were to go to the south of this property, which he has a huge side yard, but it slopes, so.
That's, this is more, not, not particularly pertinent, but do we, do we have like requirements of this sort of thing? Placement with regard to where your slope might be? Like if there's someone with a backyard here and their neighbor's here and their pool's, yeah, 20 feet, but it's flooding, it's flooding the neighbor.
That would be as much higher than the neighbor.
Something, yeah, something that is, like, if they're flooding, like, there's like a legitimate concern, even if it's 20, 30.
Or, or 50, or something.
Well, we had, we had a situation when I was in Lake, where the neighbor's pool did have a leak and over time, you know, the, the neighbor just thought it was an evacuation, but over time, that leak got a little worse and a little worse and it actually created a small mudslide below. Their pool exposed the one end of it, which happened to be the deep bed.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, I mean, it does happen, they do leak, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna think about, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
I think the idea, yeah, if everything was flat, that, that would be different, but we're not in a, necessarily a flat city, we're, we've got some elevations to deal with.
Yeah.
I think we might want, I, um, consider and try to figure out how we might want to deal with slopes and, you know, setback for slope and all that kind of stuff for pools.
The way I've dealt with it in the past, because we have one up here, Ryan, it's one of, it's, it's a friend of yours who has the infinity pool.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, you know, I had, I didn't get a G technical engineering for it, and he said, well, yeah, I get some G. And that's what he provided, or his infinity pool, but it's, it's, it's held up with retaining wells.
That's pretty close to the house.
Huh?
That one's pretty close to the house.
Yeah, it's a beautiful, beautiful setup. Okay.
Yeah, that's another, that's simple as.
Yeah, it's always a challenge. So it would be, our next planning commission meeting, which will be, let's talk about that for a second because we're gonna have, it's gonna be November, right?
You say that Plan B will be October 25th.
Sorry, I just think we're in October, man.
No.
So, yeah, it'll be October.
Okay.
And I, what I would like to do is just schedule the public hearing for that meeting in October so that we can get that out of the way, if there's still some discussion we need to have after that regarding the ordinances, we can have it, but at least we'll, we'll have the public hearing on it.
On, on, on all three of these elements then?
Well, it's my understanding that the decision on the planning commission was to say no to the chicken.
Right, excuse me, yeah, so that was.
So it would just be on the sign ordinance and on the swimming pool.
Okay. So there'll have to be some internet communication, I guess.
Yeah.
What do you think about this idea, what do you think about that idea, kind of thing?
We'll get it drafted out. Yeah, we can get it drafted out to you and, and if you guys would just, maybe we could just share the document and you can redline or put your thoughts in on, on that.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
And that kind of goes to your effort of trying to accommodate the pool builder people. Trying to get as quick as possible.
It's likely, but it's still the same kind of chaos, so I accept that.
Ryan Ivey's going with the pool too.
It, it is nice to have the pool in the ground, the shell in the ground over winter. I've heard, because it gives it a good curing and it also, you know, sides are settling and things like that, so.
Yeah.
If, if we can make that helpful, that'd be good. All right, so the next one's on the 25th and with a, most likely a public hearing on, on the ordinance changes.
Um, we're, so there's the Barker property, which is just north of Mattow's property. There, they've come to the city with a proposal and we're just starting to go through that process with them on laying out what that need would like. So that piece of property, we see that, I would say probably next, first of next year sometime, maybe.
And is that a development or just a one-off home?
No, it's development, there will be about 20.
A residential development?
Oh, okay.
Residential thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, a zone change?
There will be a zone change as soon as we're back, so it will be rezoned probably in R110 zone. Is what I'm thinking, they're gonna.
With or without chickens.
We need to, and those 12, we show. So I need to view R112. I think, I, I think that's yet to come, the zoning, once, he's been through all the geotech stuff and, and that, that actually ended up pretty, pretty good for them. There weren't any significant geotech issues with the property, other than down by the nursery. Other than down by the nursery, there's the main wasatch fault runs through there. We were already aware of that.
Does, does a mountain road pass through?
No, there'll be.
No, it'll have, it'll have a road that goes up. Right now, there's a proposal, there's two different proposals, a road with a couple of cul-de-sacs, and then a road coming down with a cul-de-sac. The two wouldn't tie together because of the, the slope.
Right.
It's greater than thirty percent, so they're looking at that, um, and, you know, we just gotta, as a staff, just gotta work through that, so don't know where we're at with that. Um, I don't think that the Christianson condo thing is dead. I think that is.
No, it's not.
I think that's, they, they still, they're still working on that. I don't know where it's at. Um, for your information, the city council, uh, your recommendation was to approve the eight units.
No.
No, no, my recommendation was to not, to deny it.
Yeah.
Do not, and they, and they appealed to the council.
It was too, it was too, I thought, it was too much for that sloped piece of ground.
The council, council, and they recommended approval as is for the.
What did?
They, they approved it if it didn't exceed six units.
Yeah, rather than eight.
Yeah, rather than eight. They called me last week, they said they're still working on it, that they've been around talking to the neighbors and trying to gather support for it, so that's still kind of swooning around out there. They haven't given a phone. Any, any second thoughts on that?
Nope.
The only, the only second thoughts I have, and this is related to what I'm working on right now, is, um, I have to submit a moderate income housing plan to the state that needs up. It's due on October first. Uh, Fruit Heights City is. Yeah, we don't, we don't need moderate income housing and affordability. I was just gonna say moderate income housing, and we don't need it for a number of reasons, and that's my argument, is it's hard to build something affordable in this city. But what I'm fearful of is that when projects come that are a little higher in density, we're denying them the ability to, to try and provide an element of, of affordability, I guess.
We are.
I'm saying, we'll accept it if you go down to six.
We are, and I had, I had a divorce that day after making that recommendation, so my own personal opinion is I'd love to see her come back and do that again, after going over that property and taking a look at that. That's, that would be fine. That would be fine for. But there were most eight units?
Eight units, but now they're, they're the six units, which means it's gonna pick up the same footprint as eight units, only they're gonna be bigger.
It's, I still think the road going north, south will make a lot more sense, like the, this, I, but I, I immediately had a divorce after I moved there, my thought, this is.
The only difference two units make is you subtract two units and you make the other ones more expensive, that's more affordable.
That's right.
Because nobody derives by that, it's the difference between six and eight.
My concern was making them fit on that slope with vehicle circulation. You know.
And that's something that they hadn't gone that far into the details to know how that.
Cause I, I've seen it, and I've worked with it, and I've done it, where, yeah, it looks good on a flat piece of ground, but when you put, you know, ten percent of slope on there, whatever that is, it's, it's close to that, I think, then, you know, it, it just increases the challenge. A lot more room needs to be taken to deal with the slopes. Where you're thinking you've got room to put curb and gutter and parking spots. It's, it's a challenge.
Well, they, they, I think, I think how it was played out, the residents were pretty adamantly opposed to it, but as you, you get the same residents that are immediately impacted by it, lots adjacent to it. Evidence, you could, you could probably weigh in as well. Maybe, maybe that would be where, depending how it look at.
Yeah, where, where is it located?
So it's in the north end of the city. If you go mountain road, you know where the.
The road that goes up to the Zard pound?
Okay, okay.
It's on that road, on the north side of that road. Right be, right behind the.
East of condos, look at that.
Yeah.
So over, over where they're doing all that eighty-nine and stuff, right?
There is some.
Yeah, there is. Yeah. So, you know, that's, just having, just recently been working on the mod, or on the general plan, and that moderate, affordable housing has to be a part of our, of our plan. I just worry that the city set itself up for some, some problems in the future, if somebody were to to say, well, we, we proposed something and you turned it down. Especially when we showed that that was a, a location where that could potentially be, you know, a place, and, and the residents there said, well, why are you sticking it all up at our end of the city? Well, that's, there's just, that's all the vacant land they have, just the areas that are available, so. Anyway.
This, uh, we talked about the I M development there. Is that um, qualify a median requirement for moderate housing?
So it did, when those condos were built, they were built as apartments. No, no, they were, no, they were built as condos. Yeah. But then.
Just across the Nichols, right, all that development on, on Main Street and Nich, and Nichol?
Yeah. They were built as condos. They did need because of the number they met affordability, but I can tell you right now, I, they ran those for more than I paid by mortgage.
That's, that's one of the city. Like exchanged central lake sewer. No, we're not gonna develop a cemetery land.
I think the answer to your question is, yes, they qualify for affordable housing, because if any rental unit is considered an affordable housing unit regardless of what it rents for, and, and I think that's ridiculous, because, I mean, they could be rented for twenty-five hundred bucks, come on the track, is still considered an affordable housing unit, so yes, you are correct in that, in that statement, but is it really helping the people that need help? No. But, but yes, it's, it's, it's counted.
Yeah, there's, there's two, affordable and low income, and the affordable one is the big, because that has to be a percentage of the median income in the area. So, and that's flexible. Or did I get that wrong? Low income. One, one of the two is.
Affordable has to be the median income of the, of the.
Of the, of the accounting or the city.
The city. I mean, the median is the highest in the count, so that's.
That's just on the number of residents that live in the house, and I think a high percentage of that as well, I'm not saying. So it, there's, they have, they have metrics on.
Okay.
What would I for?
Helps with affordable housing. We did adopt an I E U ordinance, interior dwelling unit ordinance, so that may help a little bit. But we don't know how many of those we have right now. So. We're in the process of getting those registered licenses, so that we can fill that up on our moderate income housing plan. And just to remind you, uh, council did pass your I E U ordinance, which, um, does not allow, um, short-term rentals.
No, no Airbnb kind of.
So, so this city is now joining the ranks of cities, a bunch of cities that have said aren't gonna allow short-term rentals. You can, uh, we allow any rental of a home for thirty days or more, just not thirty days or less. So that's the new rule on the books now. We'll, we'll see how that plays out. And, and no, eh, no detaxed. You have, you have no detaxed. Has to be in term. I'm dealing with a couple of those right now.
The ones are weird one up there.
Ones that are stewardship.
Yeah, they're, they're called tiny homes, okay? Lots of tiny homes.
Top shed.
I, I should be careful when I say I guess, if this is on public record, but it is a weird one. Yeah, okay. Let's, um, let's, uh, the chairman would have taken a motion to adjourn the planning commission meeting of September twenty-seventh. A second?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.